Call to order, good afternoon. I would like to call to order the Harwich Select Board Subcommittee meeting for April 8th, 2025, and I would invite our esteemed guests to do the same if they'd like.
Well, I'm not sure we have a meeting, so we'll acknowledge that we're present.
Excellent, thank you. And at the table, just so the public has an understanding of who's here, we have Michael Schell, Chair of the Chatham Select Board. We have Jeff Dykens, Vice Chair?
No.
No? Member of the Chatham Select Board. We have Jill Goldsmith, which is the Town Manager for Chatham, and Kerry Mazerel.
Mazerel.
Mazerel, I'm sorry, Finance Director over in Chatham. We have Harwich's Town Administrator here, Mr. Joe Powers, and our Finance Director, Ed Spelman. I'm Jeff Hamler, Chair of the Harwich Select Board. This is Pete Pykarski, Select Board Member. Good afternoon to all the guests. Thank you for coming together for this discussion. The relationship between Harwich and Chatham stands at a pivotal moment that presents us with an opportunity to improve our partnership for the benefit of our children. Today's discussion is not just about addressing our differences, but creating a shared vision for a prosperous and sustainable way forward for both of our towns. When tackled collaboratively, our mutual problems can transform into opportunities for growth and innovation. By combining our resources, ideas, and values, we can develop solutions that honor the unique identities of both towns and enhance a school district that has become the envy of many districts statewide. Let us engage in dialogue with honesty, transparency, and open minds, committed to actively listening, understanding, and seeking a path forward. We are absolutely all here for the same purpose: to continue to provide a top-notch educational experience for our children. That mission must be the focus of today and for all of our future engagements. Rather than an outcome of this being a one-only discussion, I recommend that we work toward reaching a consensus this afternoon, that more analysis is warranted and future meetings will be scheduled. Today, we have an opportunity to begin a powerful alliance between our towns with more communication, collaboration, and a legitimate team approach, and all should be implemented. The Town of Harwich looks forward to a productive conversation, leading us toward a promising future for our children and our school district. With that, I would like to wish both of you success in your reelection and the best of luck. I hold in the highest esteem anybody who puts their name on a ballot. Seeing that I've been doing this for a whopping two years, I understand what it takes and the commitment it takes, and I wanted to recognize that before we began. So, I think to make it clear to the public and the press, it is important to understand that today's meeting, nothing really will get accomplished, other than an opportunity for Harwich's leadership and Chatham's leadership to have what I would hope would be an honest and transparent dialogue. A dialogue so that we can share our reasonings for the positions that we have taken over the last several months, maybe even several years. And we would like to hear from Chatham their positions. And it is truly important that we understand, everybody understands here today, that we're not going to be solving any problems, we're not going to be creating any solutions. The hope is for future meetings, and that's at least where our board is coming from. We understand how difficult and how high of a hurdle this will be, but that is not going to deter or stop us from asking all of our questions and trying to explain our position. So with that, I would like to see if my counterparts have anything that they would like to say.
I'm going to defer to Jeff. He's been with this a lot longer. I do have something to say, but I think Jeff should lead.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Schell, and thank you, Jeff. I guess it's good to be here. I have a lot of history here with the region. I was 17 years on the School Committee in Chatham and in the region, was instrumental in its inception, along with some other folks in this room, and got Chatham to the table. It was a harder fight in Chatham than it was in Harwich. The vote was 592 to 531. We only won by 61 votes. It was a secret ballot. This is back on December 6th, 2010. So it was a tough fight in Chatham, and still may be, and we hope we don't mess it up. We, there were whole, I do want to visit some history. I think it's very important because history informs the present. And I want us all to understand, folks that weren't around back in '10, '09, '10, '11, and '12, why we came together and where Harwich was in relationship to Chatham and that relationship. Harwich was under the gun to replace their high school. Harwich's high school was in a shambles. It was under sanction by DESE, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, to be replaced. And Harwich looked around to see what could be done in terms of support. And then MSBA at the time had a program where they would subsidize to the degree of 50-some-odd percent the building costs of a new building, but they needed a partner. Chatham had a very small school, a very excellent school, a very small school, however, too small. We had, in fact, 20% of our students were from Harwich. They came over to Chatham from Harwich. They were school choice. Chatham, for better for worse, was perceived as a smaller, more intimate education for the students in Harwich, so they came over. But we had one year where eighth graders, 38 of our eighth graders went to NOSIT. So as a school committee member, we had, I had a huge wake-up call, so to the school committee. We could not run a class in Chatham for four years with, you know, 20 kids, 25 kids. So we needed kids. Harwich needed a high school, we needed kids. But ancillary to that and congruent with that was that we wanted better opportunities for our students in Chatham, as small as it was. We didn't have a band, per se. We didn't have glee club. We didn't have all the AP classes we wanted to have, so having more kids under the roof of a region would allow our kids for greater opportunities in academics, arts, and athletics. And that's exactly what's happened. Now, I want folks to also understand that we worked really hard on a regional agreement that was reflective of the wishes of both towns. We had some amazing leaders from Harwich. We had Tommy Blute, we had Brian Wittergren, we had Sharon Stout, we had, I'm going to forget folks, but Terry Russell, great people. And we hammered out an agreement based on, hey, three-year rolling enrollment. And that's what everybody was doing at the time that ever did a region. What's more logical? How many kids you got in the school? That's the vig you're going to pay. That's the tax you're going to pay based on how many kids you got in the school. We would love to be paying more. We would love to be paying more. We haven't got enough kids. And we're working on it assiduously with our efforts in affordable housing, and hopefully we can add to the ranks of our students, you know, in the next five or 10 years. We really wish we were paying more, to be honest with you. We'd love to have more kids in town, because we're becoming a monolithic demography. It's really an older demography without kids. But we'd love to load up these, the Montemoy schools with kids, but it hasn't happened yet. So our percentage has gone from 28 to 24 over the last, you know, 10 years or so. Love to see it higher, it's not. But in the same breath, we've got a contract, and we've got a good contract. It's a contract that's reflective of the students that we have in the system. And I don't really know what's any more fair than allocating costs, capital, operating, debt costs, based on the amount of kids we're sending. Harwich has, and just to back up for a second, the other piece of the deal with Harwich, we got a high school on, you know, at a discount. You guys are probably on the hook for a $42 to $45 million dollar number to build your own high school alone. You ended up with about $25 million, thereabouts. These are rough numbers. So you saved $20 million bucks out of the gate. Now, you look at the chart, you say, you know, we've saved, you've overspent. You guys saved 20 out of the gate because you didn't build your own high school. So boom, pretty well done. On top of it, we gave the middle school. So we gave a middle school to the region for a buck. Eventually, you guys were able to free up your middle school and use it for other creative uses. And we didn't ask for a dime out of that. We turned it to the Town of Harwich. $20 million upfront, middle school back to you, better program, and I have to emphasize, I just drove through it again, that is the most incredible asset. We'd love to have that asset in Chatham. We would love to have it in the middle of our town. That is stupendous, with the ballfields there, the football field there, the community center across the street, and the Council on Energy across the street with green space everywhere. You've got to be kidding me. That's a $100, $200 million asset there. So I think Harwich before, and one other thing, and this bothers me, and it has bothered me. Seems like Harwich, at the last minute, approaches the school committee and says, we need more money. We need to cut, every year, it's been every single year. And you know what? The school committees, some of you say yes, and some of you says no. But that's not right. You guys got to get involved a lot, a lot earlier in the process when they're doing their budget. One other final point. Joe's on record in the papers as saying, we're fine here in Harwich. Yet I hear an undercurrent of, we're not fine here in Harwich. Jeff, the other night at the school committee meeting, he said, we don't have a crisis, we do have a crisis, we don't have a crisis. So I'd really like to know where you guys are coming from financially, so that we understand where you're coming from. Maybe this is part of the discussion today, I think it should be. But I hear both sides, Harwich is fine, it's in the paper, Harwich is fine. Yet I also hear that we haven't got any levy limit, we're at the Maxwell levy limit. Well, what is it? And is that why you're going to the schools? And the last place I would look is the schools. Why would we want to nickel-and-dime our students? Why? We don't want to, one iota. So why are we cutting budgets? Why are we saying this is not one of our highest priorities? So a little history, I'm pretty passionate about it because I've been so involved, but I want the best for our students as well, nothing but the best. And we are now providing them dying close to the best, let me tell you. What we've created here is phenomenal. It's phenomenal. What an asset, physical, spiritual, educational, athletics, arts, academics. It's one of the best high schools on the Cape, if not in the state. So I'll shut up, and, you know, I wax on a little bit, but history is good, context is good. A lot of people forget where this came from, you know, how hard people worked to put it together. Be quiet.
That's a tough act to follow. And I haven't been around for any of that. I will say this, and this is really important to me. Been around a lot of schools. I started my professional life as a school teacher. I've been around a lot of schools, my kids helping out in various contexts. I participated in the Montemoy program, which was, you know, what does a Montemoy graduate look like? And I could not have been more impressed with what's going on, what I was able to see in that brief encounter, the few kids that I run into here and there that are Montemoy kids. I'm just impressed, and that's against a standard that comes from a lot of different places. And so from my perspective, I want to emphasize what Jeff is saying about, it's about the kids. And I'm not trying to duck any issues here. I like what you said, Jeff, about, you know, we're starting a conversation, this is going to go on. I welcome a conversation, I think to the extent that we can actually have open and canned dialogue back and forth, that's got to be, without necessarily achieving any changes or movement, I think that has to be salutary for the relationship. And by the way, I mean, you know, long before I got involved in Chatham politics, I was doing a lot of things collectively with people in Harwich. You know, it's a great town, a lot of great people, you know, I didn't really recognize too much of a border back and forth. And so this is a little bit painful for me, that we need to figure out how to be, how to maybe restore a little bit the partnership that has produced this phenomenal school system. And I just hope that we can do that in a constructive and productive way, as opposed to, you know, sort of in an adversarial, in an adversarial way. So I look forward to having a conversation and hearing what you have to say about what you think is an issue and how you would propose to address that in a remedial way. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael, I appreciate that. We'll hear from Pete.
You know, where do I begin, right? There's a thousand places we can begin. History is a great lesson. Clearly, the towns came together to form this district for a reason, and it wasn't one-sided. It wasn't just the Town of Harwich's needs. The Town of Chatham, as you alluded to, had needs as well for their students. And so this was a win-win for both communities. And, you know, I'm not going to go back and forth about the numbers and what dollar Chatham contributed to the new school. To me, there was a need, there was a great opportunity where two school superintendents were getting ready to retire, or thereabouts, and so there was a real, you know, effort by both communities to come together and form this regional agreement. And there were some fantastic people involved from the Harwich side, and I'm sure from the Chatham side, that created this agreement. The agreement itself is designed to be reviewed every five years. It's written within the agreement, because we know that an agreement signed on day one doesn't necessarily last for 20 to 30 years, right? There isn't a regional school agreement that I'm aware of that hasn't gone through its ups and downs, one community feeling as if they're not being, you know, fairly represented at the table, or they're overpaying for certain costs. It's just what happens in regional agreements, and I don't think this is any different. We're not asking the Town of Chatham to subsidize the Harwich students, the Harwich residents, not at all. But we're also not sitting back and just willing to subsidize the Chatham population. Now, when you form two entities, form a district, clearly there was a larger district than a smaller district. And typically, when two districts that are unequal in size come together, the smaller district receives some benefits, right, from scale. So they receive some benefit from the scale. I don't know what the best solution is to try to create additional equity, but what I can talk to you folks about today is some facts. And again, history is wonderful, but some facts also matter. And the facts are, there's a sentiment in town, and I'm not going to say it's unanimous, and I'm not going to say it's the vast majority, but there's a sentiment in town that the Town of Harwich is paying too much for the school assessment. There's a sentiment in town that the Town of Harwich assessment on capital project is too high. Whether that matters to you folks, doesn't matter to me. I represent the people in Harwich who have this concern. I don't know what's going to happen at this town meeting regarding either the school budget or the project, the capital project. The Finance Committee and the Select Board have both endorsed the school budget, and yes, we did ask the school board to sharpen their pencil. I'm not going to get into the back and forths of, you know, at the 11th hour baloney and all that, because I disagree. What I'm here to say is that we're not in a fiscal crisis, as Joe alluded to, and as every member of the Select Board in Harwich has alluded to. However, what we don't want to be is in a fiscal crisis in years to come. And there's a couple different ways to operate a budget, right? We choose in Harwich, and we have historically, to operate close to the levy limit. Whether that makes good business sense to you folks or not, again, that's how Harwich has chosen to do it. Whether every board member that currently sits on the Select Board agrees with that philosophy, agrees with that today, maybe not. But the way we operate it is not only legal, it's appropriate. But when you get close to that levy limit, you need to look out years to come. You can't just focus on the current fiscal year 26. And what we foresee are some concerns if we don't manage our budget better than we have been. That's the simple fact. We have residents in town, as I said, that are concerned with the formula. We have an opportunity within the agreement that says it can be opened every five years, or at the discretion of the school board and/or 10% of one of the towns, the registered voters. What we've decided is rather than put pressure on the school board, or to ask our town residents to sign a petition, is to have a joint conversation with the Town of Chatham, to look at the way in which the agreement is structured today, and what we might be able to do going forward. There's a million ideas in Harwich as to how it could be improved or changed. I'm sure the Town of Chatham is going to, oh, well, I'm sorry, Jeff, you did say you're willing to pay more, so I'm sure every resident in Harwich is happy to hear that. They'd love for you to write the check.
We got more kids, Pete.
And I understand that philosophy. And I believe when it comes to the education of the students, the student enrollment is a factor. But where I would disagree is on capital and centralized costs, because in order to maintain a school system, whether you have one child or 1,000 children, there are certain costs that are expected and required to operate a school system. So again, we can have a lot of back and forth. I don't think there's going to be a presentation today on what an agreement could look like. But what I would like is a willingness to have these conversations going forward and openness to back and forth, because I don't sit here to pretend I know everything. I hope neither of you sit there pretending that you know it all. I won't disrespect my chair, but I can tell you, he probably doesn't know it all either. But we do have some pretty good experts in the room who I can rely on to help us get through this, if the Town of Chatham is willing to have a conversation with us to improve upon what we consider to be a need with this agreement. So that's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. Please.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Pete. Yeah, just you gave a little, you know, looksee into kind of the public sentiment here in Harwich, and I'll give you just a little looksee into the public sentiment in Chatham. We felt as though, when we took on the 100% of the cost in the elementary school, that we'd really done our thing, that in fact, we understood the ask from the Town of Harwich and from the school committee, saying, hey, guys, it's really expensive to run this small, intimate, little elementary school. We get it, we got it. So the first year, we picked up $700,000, and this year it's going to be $1.3 million. So, and that's not a small nut for the Town of Chatham to swallow. So, you know, we took into the elementary school a couple years ago, and we felt as though, you know, we've kind of done our thing, thank you. And to hear, it's just a little frustrating for the town to hear that Harwich needs more. And so, you know, I just don't understand why Harwich thinks they need more. I don't get it, I really don't. I don't. And being frank, I mean, you know, with the elementary school, we took $1.3 from your side of the ledger over into our side of the ledger.
Totally. That was at your request, if I'm not mistaken?
Two years ago, because we understood that, well, it was not a request, but we understood that, you know, things were out of whack, and that in fact, we're going to help the region out, we'll take on the total cost of the elementary school. We want to have our own elementary school, we don't think we have a viable town without our own elementary school, so we'll do that. And we did that.
Right.
And that must have helped.
Well, of course, right? It helps. But again, that's one piece, that's one piece of the puzzle. And to Jeff's point, that was at Chatham's request, because to your comment, you folks wanted to own and operate your own elementary school. So the Town of Harwich was willing to open the agreement and have that conversation with you. Now, clearly, there was a benefit to the Town of Harwich, but the Town of Chatham saw the value and the benefit in doing it. So, just like the original agreement, there was a benefit to both sides. The revision two years ago was a benefit to both sides. And so what we're looking at today is how can we improve upon the agreement today that is a potential benefit to both sides? And the benefit to Harwich may be a few dollars in savings, and the benefit to Chatham is that they continue to receive, the students in Chatham continue to receive that excellent education that they've become accustomed to. So there lies the benefits.
Well, I'm just going to say, I, and I want to be educated, but...
As do I, but go ahead.
What I have heard, maybe in some of the more, you know, the blunter commentary, is we're paying too much, without really a whole lot of explanation as to what it is that's, what's too much with too little. And I guess, that's kind, I mean, and what I thought I just heard you say is, well, you know, if we can pay a little less, the benefit will be that we get what we're getting now, which is our kids getting a superb education. I, I mean, I'm prepared to be educated on that, but I do need some more detail as to exactly how that works. I also want to come back to the elementary school. I wasn't here, I didn't participate in those conversations, but it's my understanding, albeit with information and input after the fact, that there was a problem that really was not going to solve itself in terms of the relative sizes of the, and costs of running two elementary schools, the way it was being run at the time, and that in order to address that, it really was necessary to do something, whether it was a different kind of consolidation that I believe and understand was also considered. Where it ended up is pretty much what folks decided was the best solution to a mutual problem, and it cost Chatham a million, well, at the time, I think it was $800,000 or $900,000 that year. And nobody's complaining about that or whatever, but I really, I would hate to think that this is going to redound, or, you know, reduce itself into a, well, you know, we gave the elementary school, and now it's our turn, or something of that nature. That's my only thought. So, thank you.
I may. Did it, please? You know, I respect everything you're both saying, and if I were you, I'd probably be saying the exact same things. The playbook is pretty simple. I don't think there's anything that is strategically earth-shattering in this conversation. We've heard a lot of the history, which I can appreciate, but for you, Michael, you had mentioned you haven't seen any of the data, any of the whys, we feel we're paying too much. So, as foundational enrollment continues to increase, the trend of foundational enrollment in the Town of Harwich continues to increase, so does the assessment to the school budget, so does the capital assessments, and so does the cost of the future assessments on the outstanding debt for the repayment of the high school construction. I would ask, well, I put one of these at all your desks, and I know you're familiar with them. It's not, again, anything that anybody hasn't seen already. And I've also laid it out for the public. The public wants to take one, they're here. I don't know where, but they're here. They're somewhere out there. Back in 2011, the Harwich High School assessment was around $20 million. And if you extend that theory outward 14 years, with nominal increases, $20 million goes to 20 and a half, goes to 21, goes to 21 and a half. But as you look at this graph, this graph represents a $69 million above what we would have been paying for our own high school over the course of 14 years. $69 million extra. If you look at the Chatham, conversely, the assessment was around $10 million, give or take, $10,108,138, to be more specific. And if you extend that out 14 years, at $10,108, it might go to $11 million, it might go to $11.5, it might go to $12. But Chatham has seen a reduction or savings in $16 million over the course of 14 years. So you ask about the debt. To date, the assessed amount that Chatham has paid for repayment of the school debt is $5,371. So the way I see it is there's been a $10 million savings so far to Chatham. I might be wrong, I don't think I am. Harwich has $15.7 million assessed to date and another $15.5 million future assessments. There's a $41 million, $41,244,000 debt, including principal and interest, to build that school. Chatham spent $5 million and is going to spend another 4.6. Harwich has spent $15.7 and is looking to spend another $15.4. So I guess my question would be, do you disagree that it's unreasonable for us... So, I guess my question would be, do you disagree that it's unreasonable for us to come here, show you these numbers, and ask you, do you think it's unreasonable that with the trends, the way they're going in the town of Harwich, and I'll add to the housing point that Mr. Dykens brought up, we're also looking at trying to create housing in the town of Harwich? But there's a bit of a disincentive for us because as we continue to increase housing, that's going to increase our school foundational enrollment. Of course you want to increase housing. Why wouldn't you? You'd pay more in the school budget, but you'd also create a place where young families can come and survive. And Harwich is not much different. Most of the Cape is not much different. So I think that's a fact of truth that can't be really disputed. But, again, I ask, is it unreasonable for us to come to the table knowing that capital assessment goes up, cost of future assessments go up, and debt for repayment on the high school construction continues to elevate as your numbers go down and our numbers go up, or your numbers stay the same and our numbers go up? I don't think it's an unreasonable ask, especially since, as my colleague here brought up, that there is a provision in the agreement for us to look at these unintended consequences that have occurred, things that nobody could have ever foreseen, things that are going to potentially get in the way of the top-notch educa... The only thing that I think everybody's agreed upon at this table so far is that we have a top-notch educational system. And if we want that to continue, we need to have more conversation, more willingness to work out the issues. And we're not sitting here talking about massive changes right now, but incremental changes over the next several years and maybe a ceiling, and to Mr. Bukarski's point, capital projects. I'm not so sure our town's going to vote through your capital project. I, there's so much that surround...
It's not our capital project.
Our capital.
Our, our.
District's capital project.
Yes.
And I appreciate your correction.
Yeah, it's not ours. It's ours.
I heard you, and I appreciate your correction.
Formula.
Our capital projects.
It is.
It's our district's capital projects. Nonetheless, I don't know where our voters are going to go with that. So that being said...
Can I speak to the project just for a second, Jeff? If I might?
Sure.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
You have to emphasize the notion that it's the district's capital project, and we have a contract. And we gave that middle school to the district back in 2010 for a buck. That school was built back, it was built back in the 50s at an enormous investment. I don't know the number off the top of my head, but I know that $22.5 million was expended in 1997 for that school. Imagine trying to replace that middle school somewhere within these two towns and what it would cost if we don't vote for that project. You want to watch the shingles and the plywood of the road and the windows not be flashed and replaced? Do we want that for our middle school? Do the voters of Harwich really want that for our middle school? Imagine if we let that middle school just go beep, 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 beep. This year, we don't, we don't fix it. Next year, we don't fix it because we don't believe in it. And the year after, we don't fix it because we don't believe in it. And we have a lousy middle school, we have to replace it. What do you think in today's dollars is going to cost to replace that 15,000 square foot facility, whatever it is? Hundreds of millions of dollars. So literally, I beg the town of Harwich to vote for that because we're just literally shooting ourselves in the foot if we don't. We're just foregoing, just forestalling, just putting out into the future a problem. So, let me speak to the voters of Harwich because I really think we'd be doing ourselves and our students and our middle school a disservice. It's a beautiful school. It's a perfect middle school. Two gyms, all sorts of space. You've got labs. It's perfect. Need to do something with the skin, and it's expensive. But we gave it to the region. We gave it to it. We freed up your middle school so you could do other creative things with it.
So I appreciate that position.
Really, really feel so strongly about this.
I do, but I think you're looking at one component versus the overall component. You're saying the middle school needs help, and I agree that it needs help, and it's a district issue. But there's a larger problem, Jeff.
Replacing it in 100 years or 10 years?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, I don't want to interrupt you.
No, I'm good. I'm good.
There's a larger problem. There's a larger issue. I'm trying to articulate that larger issue. I don't need this to, I'm not trying to change your mind at all. Or yours, Mr. Shell. No intention on changing your minds, simply pointing out our position.
Okay.
That's all.
Well, if I may, yeah, I, with all due respect to everybody here, if all we do here is articulate positions, we can keep doing that until hell freezes over. We're not likely to get to a, any kind, and I'm not predicting or otherwise promising any outcome here, but I do know from a lot of experience that the perspective here is that there's a, there's a common issue. I mean, you know, I'm thinking, this is kind of like the parents having a fight that is, you know, redounding to the detriment of the kids. And I appreciate, you know, that the voters of Harwich, you know, they may be fed up, they may feel like they're getting the short end of the stick, et cetera, et cetera. But the fact is that in terms of looking at options, what are we going to do here? The options really, and I'm not putting it any more on you than it is on us, that what are we going to do here? We can let the middle school continue to deteriorate, and it's just going to get, not maybe exponentially, but it's going to get a lot more expensive very, very quickly if we don't address that right now. And I, you know, I appreciate that, you know, that's a bitter pill for Harwich voters to swallow, but it's a lot less bitter than the one somebody's going to have to swallow a year or two or three down the road. That was Jeff's point. But I think that if we look at the options, there are no better options. I mean, you know, there just aren't any. I mean, yeah, we can look at the agreement. I'll show you another piece of the agreement where it talks about withdrawal. It's just not an option. We are bound together as partners. We have to fix this. We have to solve the problem. But I really strongly feel that it is no solution to say, you know, we're going to, we're not going to do something that is, that has no option realistically. And so I, that's my way of appealing to the voters of Harwich to say, okay, you know, we can continue to have conversations and hopefully reach some sort of a productive result, but holding a threat not to approve that over the district's head is not likely to help us here.
Pete?
Mr. Shell, you asked as far as, and I don't have as granular as you're looking for, but, you know, based on my earlier comments, and I left some, I guess, important pieces out. But when it comes to the win-win situation, clearly the folks in Chatham may not see it as a win-win upfront, but to the overall conversation that was just had, we can make an appeal to the residents of Harwich, the voters of Harwich. And as you folks know, you live in Chatham as well, town meeting does what the hell they want, right? That's the body that rules, and that's a healthy and good thing for all communities. So the bottom line is, if capital projects and our operating budgets don't get approved by the citizens, the voters of Harwich, that's when it impacts the students in the school district, whether we agree with it or not. And that is where the win-win comes into play, where if we can show good faith that we're working together and trying to come up with a solution that helps everybody, then that's our responsibility as elected officials. Again, I can't stress enough that the language states the agreement is to be reviewed every five years. And I'm not saying it needs to be tweaked every five years. Hell, this should have probably been addressed two years ago when the elementary schools were brought forward. I wasn't sitting here at that time. I'm not going to say the folks didn't do their due diligence at that time. It just wasn't a priority for whatever the reason. What I'm saying now is with some of the comments and conversations being had within the town, it's in our best interest to have this dialogue with you folks today in a professional setting so that we don't get into this adversarial relationship, and we do what's best for the school's district and the students. And I've said it a few minutes ago, and I'll say it again, we're not looking for Harwich, for Chatham to subsidize the Harwich student population. But there is a sentiment based on, again, the larger entity absorbing a smaller entity or joining together without absorbing, that with some of the centralized costs not being split evenly, then it is in some fashion a benefit to the town of Chatham. Again, you folks would need a school superintendent and administrative office if you ran your own school district.
Need a lot more than that, sir.
100% agreed, right? And, but not at 23%. And that's the, that's the point.
So would Harwich. So would Harwich.
Agreed. And Harwich is paying right now 77% of it.
Then you'd be paying 100.
100% agreed.
It'd be more because we still have the debt service for the whole region on top of everything else.
And I'm not disagreeing with any of that.
That's not, that's not an option, by the way.
What's not an option?
Blowing it up is not an option.
Blowing what up?
Having our own, you're talking about having our own...
No, 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 no. Those words never came out of my mouth. I'm not blowing up the district.
Okay, what was your point?
My point is on the formula, on the assessment formula. Right now, it's at 77.23 or 78.22 or 70...
6.24.
Yeah, I think it's going to 77, but either way, it was split in 1%. My point is, you wouldn't operate a school district on 23%, nor would we operate one on 77%. I agree with all those statements, but 77 is much greater than 23 on the fixed cost of central administration, on fuel, on lights. Those costs would be incurred by the town of Chatham as they are at your elementary school now without Harwich, you know, being part of the equation. And all my point is that if you have a central office, then a starting point in these conversations could be, are those some of the areas that it could be, you know, closer to a 50-50 combination? Not the operational cost for staff that are teaching students. We're looking more granular.
Well, a couple of things here. First of all, I'm not sure, I mean, let me put it this way. It's not intuitive to me why central costs, as you put it, like administration, should be split on any basis other than the way all the costs have been split, are being split under the present arrangement, and were split at the beginning in terms of building the new school, et cetera. So that's question one. But I think the other thing, and by the way, I take your point, we need to talk to our voters as well about whatever it is that bears on this, whatever we need to, whatever bitter pills there are to be swallowed to the extent they're there, that's our responsibility with respect to Chatham, whether successful or not. But from a Chatham perspective, I think it's important to remember not only the things that Jeff mentioned at the outset about how this came together and the change that took place with respect to the elementary schools. If you look at at least the numbers I'm seeing, and I don't want to represent these or anything other than what I'm seeing that seem to me to be, at least in big picture terms, reliable, Chatham is paying a significant amount more for the education of their students per student than Harwich is. Now, I don't know whether that's a metric that ought to be part of this conversation, but it would seem to me that it ought to be at least somewhat relevant. And I offer that simply not to say, you know, we need to address that, but rather to say that, you know, there are a lot of different ways to look at how the allocation formulas are operating on their respective towns, some of which look relatively unfavorable to Harwich, but some of which look unfavorable to Chatham.
If I might?
Please.
Yeah. So I take your point, Michael, and I heard it and respect it. I'm wondering if the data you're speaking of is per pupil cost of Chatham at $31,000 roughly, I believe?
Yep.
Per pupil cost in Harwich is roughly $21,000 for the Harwich assessment? I believe that's due to the fact that you have a very small elementary school, and it costs an awful lot more money to run that elementary school with very few kids, so the cost per student goes up. That's at least my understanding of why you have that differential between our school cost per pupil and your cost per pupil per school, is your elementary school has about 153 kids. We have 400 and something. So it would stand to reason that the difference comes in the operation of educating 153 kids, the cost of each pupil goes up. So, I might be wrong.
Well, but I'm addressing the point about, you know, that the smaller school, the smaller district, the smaller partner subsidizes the larger one, which seems to be the operative predicate here. And all I'm saying is, yeah, we are. We're subsidizing it with funds.
It was at your request. It was at the town of Chatham's request to take back your elementary school.
Let's back up a bit.
I want to say, I mean, that may absolutely be the correct analysis. I don't know whether it is or it isn't. And without sitting here and getting my calculator out, I'm just going to say, I accept that you believe that that's the reason. I would need to be, have that explained to me before I accept it.
If I might, again, if I might, guys, look, the town of Harwich came to us and said, we're paying way too much for the cost of your elementary school. You did. Let's not rewrite history here. This isn't revisionist history. This is history. And we just, and at that request, we realized, hey, you know what? We are paying a lot per pupil, and it is costing Harwich a lot, honestly. So we decided to bring it in, and we did, two years ago. 700 grand, 800 grand, a couple of years ago, 1.3 this year. But I have a specific question for both Jeffrey and Peter. Have you guys taken a position as a select board on the capital project for the middle school yet?
Yes.
And have you supported it?
Indefinitely postponed.
You've indefinitely postponed. So you have no recommendation for town meeting?
We'll make one.
At the town meeting?
As of right now, it's indefinitely postponed.
And as your statement now for this meeting in front of us, I'd like to know how you're going to support it?
I'm here to answer your questions.
Okay. Are you going to support it?
It's indefinitely postponed right now, and the board will have to decide where we're going to go with that.
Okay. I really wish you would support it as a board. I think it's very important to, for the town of Harwich to hear that you're supportive of the project.
Well, of course, and I heard that from you earlier multiple times. Pete?
I was just going to interject. I believe that the finance committee in town has endorsed, so there'd be a positive motion on town meeting floor.
Finance probably, finance committee probably recognizes that, you know, you don't want to throw good money after bad two or three years from now, so I think it's, I think that's judicious. That's a good recommendation, so I, again...
I'm not sure if that's their rationale or not, but could be.
Well, we can't speak for them, but they took the right vote.
Correct.
But I just want to make sure I understand, when you say indefinitely postponed, you're talking about consideration of the matter at the select board, not that that's your recommendation.
The recommendation going into town meeting in our warrant is to indefinitely postpone.
Oh, that's the recommendation to town meeting?
That's right.
To put it off for a year?
As of right now, that's the position of the board.
And I'm sorry if I was unclear. In the warrant, it's indefinitely, to indefinitely postpone the project.
And again, the finance committee has made a recommendation to support.
In the warrant.
I have to say, I'm sort of blown away.
I'm extremely disappointed as a partner.
As are we.
How can you say that?
What I'm hopeful for is what I stated in the very beginning. We get our cards on the table. Our recommendation on town meeting floor can absolutely be changed. I believe, well, I'll speak for myself, I would like to change that recommendation. We're going to need to see some kind of assurance that we're going to have future meetings from the town of Chatham. Thoughtful, honest, transparent meetings. Because there is a problem, and if you, if you look back to how difficult this budget cycle was, as the numbers just keep getting higher, and as I stated, capital costs go up, and the cost of the repayment of the debt go up, and the budget goes up, I don't see those budget cycles getting any easier going forward. I'm trying to prevent that. We are trying to work together to prevent that. And as I stated earlier, and I was very clear in my statement... very clear in my statement, nothing's going to get accomplished today. But if we can walk out of here shaking hands and saying, listen, we understand your position, you understand ours, let's set another meeting in a month, go away, have some time to think, come back, and begin to discuss what future steps can be taken. That's what I'm looking for. I can't speak for my partner here, but that's what I'm looking for. And if there's no intention of that on that side of the table, then all you have to do is say that.
Jeff, I said at the outset, at the absolute outset, my comment was that I appreciated your recognition that we would unlikely to make any substantive progress here today, but that you were interested in, and we would be interested in future meetings. I said that right at the outset.
Understood and agreed.
Okay, but that seems to be what your demand is for, I mean, as I understand what you're telling us, that you have to have that in order to have any prospect of there being a change of the recommendation with respect to the middle school project. That's what I understand.
Fair enough. Is that...are you asking me that?
You've got your future meeting, so if you want to tell us what effect that has on the position with respect to the...
I'll speak for myself. I'll speak for myself. As I said, my intention would be to get future meetings, and then I can go away from this meeting here and evaluate my position for that project. I'm not going to speak for the rest of my board. They're going to get to watch this, just like your board will get to watch this, and they can make their own decisions. I'm interested...
It can give me great comfort, Jeff.
No, it doesn't, and I'll tell you something else. You're taking on whatever the incremental cost from year to year. Any conversation about rearranging the allocation such that there's a dollar X benefit to Harwich, we start with the incremental costs of that first year that we've given up by not doing this project today.
So, what would be your suggestion? You've heard our position. You've heard where we are with the school budget, with the capital cost, the operating cost. What would be your suggestion to the town of Harwich to move forward? Help us understand how to do it.
I thought we had responded affirmatively to what you asked for, which is meetings.
Okay. You have anything you want to add?
No, not at this time.
Okay.
I guess, if I could, the one thing I want to clarify, and I already stated it, but there was never a comment out of my mouth about dissolving this agreement or this relationship. So, I want to make that clear.
Absolutely understand. I was just reading the agreement. That's all.
Which is fine, yeah. So, I just, I want that to be clear. I do hope that future conversations can not only have a little more substance and detail, but a willingness to truly hear both sides and understanding that we don't speak for the voters on town meeting floor, right? So, that is truly my concern, and that is why I think it's important for us to have these conversations. And I'll leave it at that. I just, I think there's value in this, and I think it is incumbent upon us to have these more frequently.
And I'll agree with all of that. The only thing I'll say about the voters and the town meeting is this. I've heard a lot of stories about what an unbelievable push it was on both sides, more on Chatham's side than on your side, to get this approved in the first place, and it had everybody with their shoulder to the wheel to get it done, recommending, arguing, making the case, bringing out the vote. And I think, I'm going to say, I'll just say, I hope that that will be the case here with respect to a project that's very tough, I understand, for Harwich, but putting it off a year has no, absolutely no salutary result other than to make it more difficult for us to do what it is you're asking us to do.
Yeah, well said, Mike. I echo what Mike just said. I'm certainly willing to speak again, converse again. Just a couple of points of clarity. The five-year look back is by the actual school committee itself, but they wanted...
Agreed.
They would obviously take direction from each town, but the school committee is the genesis of that effort, and there is a mechanism where 10% of the voters can, but they're asked to go to town meeting and also be approved at town meeting.
Correct.
So, there's a fairly arduous way to amend the agreement going forward should we ever get there.
Agreed. And I don't want to see, and as I said at the beginning, I don't want to see it go to the 10% of the voters. I'd rather have the conversation with the school board and folks like us or whomever occupies our seats in the future so that, again, they can be productive meetings without any animosity.
I have more comments about numbers, but I'm going to stop. Going back to Jeff's $69 million, there's a bunch of different ways to look at that, and I have, and it may be quite an overstatement, so I just want to make that statement in public. And it depends on where you start from as well, actually where you end up, anyway.
Well, I'm going to add to that. If this is going to be a numbers discussion, I think then we ought to let the experts give us a set of numbers that everybody agrees on, and we can look at that whole, that set of numbers as opposed to sort of looking at the ones we want to look at and not the others or whatever. And I'm not suggesting that's what's going on here.
No, of course.
But I think numbers that come from the experts is the way to look at numbers.
Well, I'll agree with that, and I think if you and I would like to work together in formulating a plan for the next meeting so that we can have a worthwhile agenda, one that's looking forward, not looking backward, one that's looking partnership and not adversarial discussion, I would wholeheartedly endorse that.
Okay. And quickly, if I could, and to Jeff's point, I'd love to see the school committee take this subject up, to be quite honest with you, so...
To that point, and I have nothing but immense appreciation for the work of the regional school committee. They have, the subcommittee in finance had just gone crazy on this last budget, and I said earlier that it does bother me, and frankly, probably bothers them as well, that Harwich does seem to weigh in late in the process. And Jeff, you attended the last meeting, and I watched it, and you made a commitment to be the liaison, I believe, to the regional school committee. I think that Chatham ought to have a liaison to the school committee as well. I think that's a good idea, and I'd certainly volunteer to do that.
Great.
No, I'm not. Again, I would just disagree, Jeff, on the timing of our request of the school board, but, again, we can spend all day debating that.
It's just how they feel.
Yeah. And again, and I think a comment you made earlier today was that the town has often asked them to reduce their budget. I would disagree with that comment as well. Perhaps I'm wrong because I haven't been on the board as of late. I had quite a gap in my term, so to my recollection, the select board has not often asked them to reduce their budget.
So, as we sit here now, Michael, I'll reach out in the next day or two, and we can have a debrief and a discussion about next steps forward, if that works.
Okay, but be honest with you, in all candor, that's fine. I will always take your call. I'll always have a conversation with you, but I think from Chatham's point of view, until we see what happens with respect to the middle school project, it's going to be very hard for us to lay out an agenda or a set of talking points or anything else. So, as I say, you got my number, call me anytime, but that's, I think, the key thing here at this point.
So, if I heard you right, I'll just plan on calling you after town meeting.
I think that's probably right.
That's fair. Excellent. Thank you very much for being here. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Sure we do.
Thank you.